I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Jamestown Public School Board to order. It is January 16th and it's 5:15 PM. We're in the Thompson Community Room at the Jamestown Middle School. We'd like to welcome all those in the audience and as we have lots of athletes and families and we appreciate you coming tonight. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
If it's okay with the Board, could we move the Fall Sport Recognition to right now on the agenda? I know many of them have practice to get to yet tonight, so we appreciate that. Okay. Jason, would you be willing to read the Fall Sports? We're going to start with all the athletes and then we'll finish it up at the end with the coaches. As your name is announced, please just walk over here. I have a small token for you. Then we'll have you line up on the steps behind you for one big picture in the end, okay?
All right. Start with Girls Cross Country. Lena Hofer, All-Conference 17th Place at WDA, All-State 20th Place at State Meet. Moving on to Football. Aiden Braun, All-Conference. Ethan Gaul, All-Conference, All-State. Preston Gaul, All-Conference, All-State. Peyton Hochalter, All-Conference, All-State, West Region and State Class A Outstanding Senior Athlete. Tyson Jorison, All-Conference. Colton Muse, All-Conference, All-State. Bo Nelson, All-Conference. Jackson Walters, All-Conference, All-State. Jack Van Burgham, All-Conference, Honorable Mention. Nate Walls, All-Conference, Honorable Mention. Boys Soccer. Brady Hardy, All-Conference, All-State Second Team. And Grant Lundie, All-Conference. Boys Tennis. Mason Lunsman, All-Conference. Swimming Diving Girls. Shay Baugh, All-Conference. Alyssa Larson, All-Conference. And Georgia Lentenmeyer, All-Conference. Volleyball. Bernadette Newman, All-Conference, All-State. Haley Hawkinson, All-Conference, All-State Second Team. And McKenna Knold, All-Conference. Class A Coach of the Year. Ben Smith, WDA and State Coach of the Year for Swimming and Diving Girls. And Volleyball, Sarah Hagerly, WDA West Region Coach of the Year.
Your parents aren't here, Salty.
You can send it to him.
It's been an exciting fall with all the athletes and coaches awards and activity awards that we've had. Okay. Moving on in our agenda, under B, School Board Norms. Jason, would you mind reading those for me? They're on the yellow sheet right in front of you.
The Board Development Norms are: To share and respect varied opinions and speak with united voice once a decision has been reached; to prudently prioritize resources in a student-centric manner that aligns with the district's strategic plan; to exhibit a mindset of continuous improvement through adequate preparation for meetings and a commitment to board education; and to commit to assessing board effectiveness to ensure high-quality governance for the staff, students, and community of Jamestown.
Thank you, Jason. C, Public Communication. We have no public communication tonight. D, Conflicts of Interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Moving on to our Consent Agenda. At any time, a Board Member can pull something from the Consent Agenda. It doesn't need a second for the motions. Is there anything the Board wishes to remove? Is there anything the Board wishes to remove? Is there anything the Board wishes to remove? If not, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Motion by Aaron. Is there a second? Second by Jason? Any discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. There being no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Moving into our regular meeting. Under Recognition, under, we've already completed our Fall Athletics and congratulations to all our athletes and coaches. Number two, is there a motion to approve the resolution in honor of Sally Ost? Motion by Jason, second by Aaron. Any discussion? Aaron, would you be willing to read the resolution?
Yes. The Jamestown School Board Resolution in Appreciation of Sally Ost. Whereas Sally Ost has faithfully served for more than 30 years and provided the highest quality work to the Jamestown School District, whereas Sally Ost has upheld her fiduciary responsibilities to the School Board, Administration, Professional and Support Staff, and Community of Jamestown in a manner that denotes trust and transparency. Whereas Sally Ost has provided stable, thoughtful, and focused leadership in the completion of her responsibilities and for the improvement of the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that Sally Ost be duly recognized by the Jamestown School Board for her commitment and dedication to the students and staff of the Jamestown School District and the community of Jamestown.
And to make it official, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Be it resolved, a resolution in honor of Sally Ost. Thank you, Sally, for all your years of service to the district. You'll be missed.
That does not come with a bronze statue off.
Number three, is there a motion for the resolution in honor of Roger Hout? Motion by Aaron, second by Jason. Diane, would you be willing to read the resolution?
I promised myself that I would do this without tears because Roger was stoic and steadfast and that's what he would want. Jamestown School Board Resolution in Recognition of Roger Hout. Whereas Roger Hout diligently served the Jamestown School District as School Board Member since July of 2012, with seven of those years as School Board President. Whereas Roger Hout provided outstanding leadership to the Jamestown School Board through his commitment to strong governance, serving and leading numerous committees, and at all times modeling positive board behavior and actions. Whereas Roger Hout took immense pride in the work of the school district, students, staff, administration, and school board, and valued the importance of the actions which occurred at each board meeting. Now therefore, be it resolved that Roger Hout be duly recognized by the Jamestown School Board for his commitment and dedication to the students and staff of the Jamestown School District and the community of Jamestown.
Thank you, Diane, for reading that. There's a resolution in honor of Roger Hout. All those in favor say aye. Moving under Correspondence, we have no correspondence. And under Reports, do we have a Student Council Report?
There's not much to report for the Jamestown High School Student Council at the current moment. I'll have a lot in my report for next month. We scheduled our Snow Week from February 6th to 11th, and during that time, we'll have a dance. At the end of the week, we'll have a rally. We'll elect a snow court. We'll have a coronation for that, which is part of the variety show. And there'll be a few other activities that take place during that week, but that's the main thing that's occupying the Student Council right now. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Thank you, Will. Are there any questions for Will? Are they going to have dress-up days for Snow Week?
Yes.
I'm looking forward to that report on what themes you choose.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Under Board Education, and who'd you say was here?
Kerry Solis.
Kerry Solis. Okay. We're going to have our educational competency for tonight is SARB, Procedures and Impact. And we have Mr. Justin Connell and Kerry Solis is here, who are members of the Jamestown SARB team here. Please come forward.
Hello. Thank you. I'm Justin Connell. This is Kerry Solis. We wanted to give you a little knowledge, a little background of SARB. I think it's been a while. It's been somewhere around four or five years. So giving you some insight as to where we are still at in the process and our purpose. Our purpose is still learning for all. We carry that here at JMS. We carry that JPS-wide. And our statement used to be, it's impossible, it's, you can't learn if you're not here. And we still feel that's true. We also feel with the increase in technology that it's still difficult to learn if you're not here. And so that is the goal of SARB, is to get our students here and try to create that impact and that education within the home. We've seen an increase in student achievement through regular attendance and dropout tendencies start in elementary school. So when we meet together, we have multiple elementary counselors, and that's our goal, is to try to communicate the issues early in the child's development so that we can hopefully reduce that dropout rate. Positive parent contact to help and understand the potential hardships at home is our goal. And we've had the ability to streamline our process district-wide because of our regular meetings. And this helps us create common expectations, practices throughout our district and at each school.
So I'm going to talk about the tiers. Typically, what we do with the workers that work specifically with attendance at their schools is we try to do, once we notice that a student has missed five days or more of school, we try to follow that up with a phone call as our first contact, just to let them be aware that their student has missed five or more days, and just ask if there's any way we can help. Is there something happening here at school? Is there something that we could communicate better about? And just try to build that relationship early on. That doesn't always happen with our first contact being a phone call, just based on kind of where we're at with our caseloads and those kinds of things. But we really try truly have intentions to make that first contact a phone call. Once a student has missed eight or more days of school, we send a letter home with one of our SARB Attendance Brochures in it. Again, that's a basis of communication. Here you are with the number of days that your student has missed. And again, trying to open that door for communication contacting us if there is further information or further concerns that they'd like to share. When a student has missed 12 or more days of school, we have a letter from the administrator of that building requesting with them, with the family, so that we can sit down and have a face-to-face and discuss what are some of the potential hardships, what are some interventions that we could do at school, or how could, again, I always preface every phone call and every communication with a parent, how can I help? What can I do? We don't get to Tier Four very often, but there are outside resources that we can use once someone has surpassed those, if things do not continue to get better, or we're not able to meet with the family.
So next, I'd like to share some of the challenges that we're seeing. We're seeing with our truancy that we have less or lower support, and this is, it's just harder to hold them accountable. Mental health in our students at the middle and the high school level. And then at the elementary level, we're actually looking at mental health within the parents and getting their students to school. And then there's also been an increase in medical excuses. So whether that's related to, you know, being conscious of health and not wanting to bring that into the school district, or what it might be, that's, those are some of the challenges that we have seen here in recent years since the, really since the COVID epidemic.
And lastly, our SARB committee does meet once a month. We have the elementary counselors represented on that committee, myself, Mr. Connell, and also a representative from the high school. And we discuss our barriers, we discuss our concerns, we discuss, you know, continuing to streamline the process so that we're doing the same things and having the same expectation district-wide, not just per se, per school.
At this point, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Yep, Steve, go ahead.
When you say that it's harder to hold students accountable, is that something you can talk about a little bit more?
It largely stems through the judicial system, the juvenile court system, making referrals and then they're, for whatever reason, that they just, they aren't being prosecuted as they were. So it's harder to hold those truancy students accountable, and families are finding that it's, there's low support in that also. So unfortunately, we've had some that have called, you know, called the bluff per se, if you will, and, you know, action hasn't been able to take place.
Dr. Leck, want to follow up on that?
Sure. In the past, up until this last legislative session, truancy could, would run through juvenile justice. Now that doesn't happen, that's considered in the chips and chins. A child that needs children in needs of services, and that runs through human service zones. So without the overarching juvenile justice system, then the chips and chins become a recommendation instead of responsibility through the judicial system. So we don't have that ability to go to juvenile justice anymore. And so without that overarching fear of the juvenile justice system, it, like I said, it becomes a recommendation to attend and receive services. And I think until those human service zones are fully staffed, I think that's one of the barriers that comes, is what happens now? In the past, there was some teeth, and the teeth don't exist to the same degree anymore.
Diane, you had a question?
With what Dr. Leck described, are you going to see, do you think we're going to see a real difference in our graduation rate and our dropout rate? And then I also wanted to ask about Tier Four. Are you seeing an increase of people getting to Tier Four?
You know, as far as the dropout rate, you know, that's, it's really hard to, it's really hard to tell. I mean, you have, we have students from day to day that mention it. You know, could it? It's possible. I would, I really don't want to go out there and give a percentage that I can't back up. But, I mean, we're going to continue. That's one of the things we've said in the meetings is, we may have to get more creative in our process or how we're reaching out. And, you know, as Dr. Leck stated, as different agencies are becoming fully staffed, hopefully we see success. But I would say our, there's still truancies, but I'll let you speak on the Tier Four there.
Yeah. And I would say the same thing about Tier Four that Dr. Leck mentioned is, you know, once those agencies and they kind of figure out how they've reconfigured things, I'm hoping that we're going to get some more support for families who aren't able to follow recommendations or are still, are the struggle, you know, to get their student or to get themselves in a place where they can get their student to school is improved. You know, mental health plays, some of those mental health services that, you know, are harder in our area just because of our locality. Hopefully, with some of those kinds of things getting figured out, that that will, that will help us with our 12-day and over kids. So, yeah.
And Dr. Leck had a comment, and then Jason?
Yeah, I have a comment to this one. And I am going to go out on a limb, and I'm going to say that the impact is going to be limited, and here's why. I think people like Justin and Kerry that serve on our SARB team are proactive, Diane. They are, they have been proactive for a number of years, studying and trying to make attendance better. And so the fact that we have a proactive team that meets on a regular basis, analyzes what our trends are in attendance, and more importantly, tries to address each of those barriers to attendance, that's going to make a, that's where the real difference gets made. And the other thing I would say is that we, when we made this shift in SARB a few years ago, well, it's been more than a few years, probably eight or nine years ago now, but in the past, the only solution we had was a hammer. And we would say, if you get to this point, you are going to be non-credited. That was the only thing that we did that was different. Now, as Kerry explained earlier, it's about building a relationship first. What are the barriers that you're seeing at home? How can we help? There's a reason why our counselors make the first phone call, and that is to build a relationship to home to help us understand better what those barriers are, so we can help and mitigate some of those barriers. Do we still have the hammer? Well, yeah, we have to have the hammer sometimes too, but that's not the only tool in the tool belt. And so we hope that we can address all of the issues prior to that instead of just one solution for everybody. And I think that's why it's going to mitigate, because they do a lot of really hard work, and they care about kids, and they care about getting kids to school. That's why I think you're going to see less of an impact.
Jason, go ahead.
So in terms of just raw numbers, are we seeing substantial swings either way, up or down, in just the number of at-risk students due to truancy, or is that, is that maintained somewhat consistent?
Well, I can really only speak to middle level, and no, we're not seeing increased truancy. No.
Oh, no, I got it. Sorry. I'm making an assumption here, and I shouldn't do that, but we probably know going into a semester who some of these kids might be. And so is the fifth absence the very first, is that the first contact with the family? Or, I'm assuming conversations are being-
Yep. Is it the first point of contact? With some families, yes. With some other families that we maybe have prior relationships with, or we know that maybe last year there was some attendance issues or there was a struggle. So we try to kind of get ahead of that, so to speak, between our counseling department and administrators, great administrators in my building that can help us. Okay, what do we got to do? What, how creative do we need to be? And, you know, so yes, those discussions are held.
This is a subject absolutely dear to my heart because I work in the recovery community, and I know what you mean about the parents can sometimes have mental health issues. Are you seeing these students that are at Tier Four, are they getting the help through the village or through our counseling services, or they, do they tend to be out there by themselves?
It's a mixed bag. It depends on how well hooked into the services that the family is, or familiar that the family is. And we don't have a lot. And if we, the ones that we do have have lengthy waiting lists. And, you know, if you have to drive to Fargo or Bismarck to get more of a specialized service, you're waiting a long time to do that. And sometimes families don't have resources to do that. And so it gets very, it's complicated. It's a, it's not a yes or no answer.
Yep. Go ahead, Diane.
And I just want to say thank you for your passion on this. It really makes a difference in what happens with our community when we get these kids back into the loop and get them back in school. It really makes a difference. So thank you.
Yes. Yep, thank you. I really appreciate our proactive approach, thanks to your group. So thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Thank you for coming tonight and sharing with us.
Thank you for, thank you for supporting this process.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Moving on, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. You do have my written report. I'll touch on a few of these items more than others. The Business Manager Transition and HR Generalist and the Title I, I'll spend a little bit more time on those, as you'll have other action items addressing some of my report. As you have already met, Kristy Grounds has been able to attend our most recent Board Retreat, which we appreciate, and she's been working here with Sally in the transition to begin on February 1st. One of the responsibilities that they have outside of training is to consider that HR Generalist position that the Board wisely opened and made available. I'm still looking into how we can consolidate those responsibilities, how that, those duties get shared out, but also training. And so I have been in touch with a- And so I have been in touch with a, an HR consultant, and at some point in the near future, prior to beginning such an endeavor, I may be bringing an agreement to the board for consideration for a consultant to come in and train that HR generalist. And if there's time available, provide an audit of our HR function in central office to determine how best to move forward, so we can make sure that when we have that generalist in place and a new business manager, HR director, that we are operating as best as we can right away. And I do think that there's some training that could be valuable for the generalist and for Kristi in HR as well. And so, I'm working with somebody to get a draft proposal for you already, but I think that would be wise. One other item, as it relates to that, that's going to come up on, on the board agenda is you're going to have some responsibilities that you'll need to formalize, that will need to shift, beginning on February 1st, between Sally and Kristi as a business manager. Typically, you would do these in July, but with the transition in mid-year, you're going to want to formalize those in board minutes to make sure that those responsibilities shift. We're speaking specifically, you know, mostly about banking responsibilities, things like that, that you're going to want to shift on February 1st from Sally to Kristi. And so we'll have recommended motions on there for you as well. I did have other updates, if you had any, on personnel or facility projects. That's typical to what you have been addressing in those areas. The Title I allocation that I wanted to talk about a little bit. In the past, the Department of Public Instruction has used a process related to enrollment and, well, census data, and also then a poverty calculation that they consider through free introduced lunch to determine eligibility for Title I programming as well as allocations. There is talk at the department about using the federal Department of Education calculation. My concern with this is that that is a calculation designed for school districts of 20,000 or more. In North Dakota, that's, I struggle to find the appropriateness of using a model that focuses on large school districts of that size. My concern comes, if you, I did link the side-by-side comparison there, and that sees a negative implication for Jamestown of about $120,000, which is significant to us, but beyond just advocating for our own district and saying, well, this is a concern for us, which of course it is, could we weather the storm? I think we would, we could do it. Would it be tough? Would we have to support with a general fund? Yes, we would, but could we do it? Absolutely. My concerns, though, reach beyond what would impact just Jamestown. I look at a few points. One being our reservation schools, those that see a large number of federally impacted students just off the reservation. You know, I look at Turtle Mountain Schools, Bell Court, that's a loss of about 40% funding, 1.4 million. We're concerned about 120,000. Imagine 1.4 million dollars in lost funding. Catastrophic impact. And you see a percentage increase very similar in schools like Minnewakken, and schools like St. John and White Shield. That would be more than a challenge. Like I said, it would be catastrophic to those reservation districts, and we should have a concern about that. We would see programs in smaller, and even some in the area, Pangree and Montpelier, would no longer receive Title I funding at all. They would no longer be eligible. And of course, there's a, if you add some, if you take some off, you add some on, and so there is a given and take with some of that, so there isn't a, that's no different in this situation. We have some schools that have, would lose Title I eligibility and others would gain. The challenge I see is that we are gaining fewer students from some very, very small districts that were, that were not eligible in the past and would be eligible now. Maybe the best example I could give you tonight is the, the school districts that would lose, that's about 1,000 students and about $243,000 in funding through Title I. And I won't name districts, but there's one district that's very small, serves about 19 students, and they would receive about $164,000 in funding that they didn't receive last year. When you look at 1,000 students with $243,000, that, you know, $243,000, $243 dollars per student, one district adds on 19 students of 164,000, that becomes about $8,600 per kid. It's a pretty big shift for a limited impact. I did draft a response and concern of this, not just in relation to Jamestown Public, which I of course advocate for and am concerned about, but also just the applicability of a model like this that's designed for such larger districts to be implemented in a rural state like us. I think it's just an example of how you can't always use a federal formula to determine what's best in the unique demographics of North Dakota. So I'll keep you aware in terms of what's decided. It sounds like in the next month, they'll make a decision on what formula they're going to use. My understanding is general, general feeling has been opposition or apathy towards a change. You know, if you're not impacted, you're generally apathetic, but for those that are, that are impacted, it's, it's been concern. So I'll just kind of stand for questions with those first couple topics before I move on.
Diane, go ahead.
I assume that the position of HR, that the open period is completely closed now. You're down to finalist?
Yes, they're down to finalist. We'd hope to, we hope to have somebody by this meeting, but certainly by our first meeting in February, we anticipate having somebody in place.
And, okay, go ahead. Just commenting on the consultant piece is that just sort of, I'm thinking you want to make things just more, make sure they're more efficient as we move into this new position to hit the ground running and just make the position efficiently used.
Yeah, right, from the beginning. You know, this is, the generalist is not a position, as the board is aware, it's not a position that we've had. Two things, one, we need to make sure that that person is trained appropriately and can hit the ground running, so to speak. And, and the second is, we want to make sure that we're implementing this position in an HR department in this manner correctly and in a way that our staff feels that it was a valued expenditure, and we're devoting resources to this position. We want to make sure that we're doing that job correctly and everybody's supported in their job. The audit piece of that is a little bit different, but we haven't had that position before, as the board is aware. We've kind of reshuffled that and given different responsibilities to a lot of different individuals. If we did have a consultant that had time available, I'm thinking you set a certain number of hours, and that's what the agreement would be based on, and our focus would be training. But if we had additional time, that consultant could come in and say, okay, well, in your structure, this person should be doing this, take on this responsibility, this person should take on this responsibility, here's how we would manage this workflow. Again, just so we can make sure that we're hitting the ground running.
I think it's a good idea. Thank you for explaining, explaining more. Is there other questions? What about title funding questions? Jason?
Yeah, the reviewing of the Title I allocation, that, would that require legislative action?
No, the Department of Public Construction already has a formula that they use. They've used the same formula as long as I've been around, and they have considered the federal formula in the past and have never moved forward with it. I'm not sure the impetus for why now, but it would not require legislation, just the department's action. So they're taking feedback now, and we'll make a decision in the next week or so.
Okay. And that 120,000 loss to JPS is what you're estimating on that, so that's-
Yeah, that's, that's their projection, so it would be-
Yeah, that's significant, significant to us. Thank you for sharing that. Any other questions so far? Otherwise, we'll continue, yep, go ahead and continue on.
So we have been meeting, we'll meet again this week with the Enrollment Facilities Task Force. Right now, we're working on, we anticipate having some recommendations sometime in, no later than early April. So that group has been working hard, and I very much appreciated the discussions that we've had and will continue to have. Later on in the agenda, you'll have a return to learning and continuity of services update. Just a reminder that that's a requirement through SRT three. You've been through this before. I don't have any changes to the SRT, or to the, to that particular plan, but it does need to be approved every six months and updated to our website, so we will do that with board approval. We do have policy GAA and a couple different regulation changes. We've had a discussion around this area in the past. What's different about it now is that now the Department of Public Construction has written administrative rules for it, and those administrative rules require us to have policy. So that is why a policy was drafted by North Dakota School Boards Association as a template and came to me for review. I did make one minor change about review of instructional, review and reading of the instructional material in GAC, G, I'm sorry, the board exhibit, or the board regulation, G A A C B R is where you would see the very slight change that I made. But it's a policy that's required in critical race theory in compliance as it relates to professional development. So that's been legally, or been vetted by an attorney through School Boards Association and recommended for approval. In terms of negotiations, as I've shared before, now that, with an intent to negotiate from both Education Association and the administrative professionals, we'll have recommended, or proposed or potential, excuse me, executive session for every agenda. I don't recommend or believe that you need an executive session, but from now until approval of negotiated agreements, you'll have them on every agenda. But I will help facilitate the process to make sure that we follow all the steps, especially as North Dakota Central Code has changed with timelines. We'll make sure that you stay on track. But with that, I would stand for questions.
Any questions for the remainder of the report? Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Moving on, nothing under old business. Under new business, we have nothing under activities. Under buildings and grounds, there's approval, we must be getting down to the last change orders here.
We're getting real close.
Yeah.
I thought we'd be done, but we have one more.
And I think this is the rain spout piece, scupper, is that, I like that word. Approval of change order five for Jamestown High School. Is there a motion to approve that? Motion by Steve, second by Gail. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval of change order number five for Jamestown High School. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Under curriculum assessment instruction, under A, approval of student travel study programs for foreign language. We have number one, JHS Spanish in June of 2023, and I saw that included like Madrid, and then the JHS German in June 2023. Is there a motion to approve, I think we can do this in one motion? Motion by Gail to approve this study, student travel study programs for foreign language, JHS Spanish in June 2023 and JHS German in June 2023. Do you have a motion? Second by Diane. Any discussion on these travel programs? Any discussion? Okay. There being no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Number four, under finance. Is there a motion for approval of the transition of business manager responsibilities to Kristi Grounds on February 1st, 2023?
It's a little lengthy, but we do have a written motion that we want to make sure that everything is clear. Thank you.
Yeah, there's quite a few steps in here, so.
So is that a motion, Aaron?
I move to approve the transition of business manager responsibilities of signature cards for bank deposits, withdrawals for business manager Kristi Grounds at Wells Fargo and Unison Bank. Resolution to permit the business manager Kristi Grounds to execute or cancel a lease or leases for rental of one or more safe deposit boxes to have access, exchange or surrender, and appoint duty deputies on behalf of the district. Designate business manager Kristi Grounds to sign as an authorized representative in the absence of the superintendent Leck as authorized. Representative for Title I, Title II-A, Title IV-A, and other federal, state, and local grants. Designate business manager Kristi Grounds as Title IX Coordinator in nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policy AAC, and remove Sally Ost effective as of February 1st, 2023. Robert Leck and Heidi Larson will remain as current signers on the Jamestown Public School accounts.
Thank you for the motion, Aaron. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Diane. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, we should probably do a roll call vote since it's a financial thing.
Okay, Jason Moore.
Yes.
Gail Nelson.
Yes.
Dan Tweetin. Oops, sorry. Aaron Roberts.
Yes.
Steve Veltkamp.
Yes.
Diane Hansen.
Yes.
And Heidi Larson.
Yes.
Motion passed this one.
Thank you.
Seven zero.
Thank you. And so that will begin on February, that change will take place on February 1st. Under B, there's general fund balance, that's just informational. Is there any questions for Sally regarding that at all? Okay. Under C, monthly financial reports, is there a motion to approve?
So who?
Motion by Aaron. Is there a second? Second by Gail. Is there any discussion on the monthly financial reports? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Under Personnel, we have resignations A through H. If the board wishes, we can do that in one motion. Diane, or Gail, go ahead.
I would, we accept all resignations as listed in the-
A through H.
A through H.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Diane. Any discussion? Like, go ahead, Diane.
I was just wondering if you could discuss this large number of resignations, and particularly the ones that have not been on the, in the school district very long, or is it going to be breaching confidentiality?
Yeah, I would defer to the individual resignations that are, that have been submitted. I think they tell you what, you know, you know, I think they're pretty clear in what the intent is. I think they range from moving communities, you know, husband gets a different job, or boyfriend moves to a different location. There's, of course, retirements. We want to recognize those. We have Mark Euclid, longtime classroom teacher, Jamie Eman, longtime teacher, Pat Smith, longtime school administrator, and Leslie Larson is a resignation. I think anytime we have a large number, we always, you know, it always makes our eyes, you know, look, you know, you know, wonder why. You know, I, I'm appreciative of all the work that these individuals have provided to us, and I'm also appreciative that they let us know in January of their intent to move on to another district or to retire. That gives us ample opportunity, especially when hiring is so challenged, that we have as much time as possible to find replacements. I'm very appreciative of the work that they've done, but also that they're retiring, they're making us known, making this known so early in the process. But no, no reasons for concern. We do have, you passed a policy in which we do exit interviews, and we'll conduct those and provide any feedback as necessary.
Yeah, good, good discussion, and, yeah, we are, thank you, thanking all of them for their service, every one of them that has served our district. Some of them have more tenured positions here. Also, again, appreciative that, you know, they're letting us know their intentions early on, so the sooner we can move forward to fill positions, the better off, the better position the district is. So appreciate them being very respectful of that, too. Jason?
For retirements, are we still planning to do the exit interview process with those folks as well?
I, I would have to look at the policy again, but I don't believe it denotes differently from a retirement or somebody that just opts to leave the district, so my, I guess, my assumption and my plan would be we would treat every employee the same.
Any other discussion? Any discussion? Okay. There's a motion, a second to approve the resignations A through H on your agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And moving on through, we also have extended contracts for second semester at Jamestown High School. We can do these all at once, too. There is one through nine, and we can certainly, if the board wishes, approve all in one motion.
I would approve the extended contract for second semester of Jamestown High School. I didn't use one through nine.
Thank you. And then there's a motion, is there a second? Is there a second? Second by Gail. So we have a motion, a second to approve the extended contracts for second semester at Jamestown High School, one through nine. Any discussion? Gail?
I would just like to thank them. I know with teacher shortages, it is very appreciated that we have teachers who are willing to step up and take on an extra load and do it for our kids. One extra session, sometimes it may not seem like a lot, but when you're adding that to an already big caseload, it's very much appreciated.
Absolutely. Thank you, Gail. Any other discussion, Dr. Leck?
I just want to make a comment, and I did put this in my report, but a large number of these extended contracts do relate to math. And as the board is well aware, we had a signed contract with an individual coming from out of state who kind of late in the game decided not to come, which made it hard to fill that position, made it even harder to fill that position. We weren't able to fill it in the interim. So a large number of these extended contracts relate to that math position.
So we have a motion, a second for approval of extended contracts for second semester at Jamestown High School, items one through nine. Any other discussion? There be no further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. J, Jamestown Administrator's Notice of Intent to Negotiate with Jamestown Public School Board. And we have to have a motion on this and a second?
You take action that it's received.
Yep, take action that this was received. Is there a motion? Motion by Gail? Is there a second? Second by Diane. So we have a motion, a second to, that we've received the Jamestown Administrator's Notice of Intent to Negotiate with Jamestown Public School Board. Any discussion? There be no discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Jamestown School Board Notice of Intent to Negotiate with Jamestown Education Association. Is there a motion that we've received this? Yep.
We did receive notice of intent. So Jamestown Education Association's notice of intent to, with the Jamestown School Board. So I.
Yes. So, yeah, the J E A has declared.
We've received.
We've received, yep, intent to negotiate from, from J E A in writing. So we need a motion for that, to accept that. Motion by Steve. Is there a second? Second by Aaron. Any discussion? So we've received notice of intent to negotiate. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There be no discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Under Policy and Procedures. A, approval of the first reading of policy G A A E, Critical Race Theory, and subsequent review of G A A E dash E1, J P S request of view, request to view instructional slash resource material. Is there a motion? Motion by Aaron. Is there a second? Second by Steve. Is there any discussion? We have a motion, a second for approval of the reading of policy G A A E, Critical Race Theory, and number one, subsequent review of G A A E dash E1, J P S request to view instructional resource material. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. B, approval amended board regulation, G A A C dash B R, procedure for reviewing complaints about instructional resource material. Is there a motion? Motion by Steve? Is there a second? Second by Aaron? We have a motion, a second for approval amended board regulation, G A A C dash B R, procedure for reviewing complaints about instructional resource material. Any further discussion on this? If not, all those in favor, oh, Gail, go ahead. Yep.
As we read your number, I want to make sure that my.
When we get to some of these definitions of, of why, recommendations to remove, maybe that I would like to make sure that we have a discussion on that. Any kind of censorship very much concerns me. And what is vulgar to me may not be vulgar to someone else. So when those things are put out, I want to make sure that we're not headed in a slippery slope. I, I just, yeah.
Understood. As an individual who has gone through this process, I can say that the, not in Jamestown, but in the past, many school districts have, if not the exact same policy, a very, very similar policy. It is a rigorous process that includes a lot of different perspectives that makes a recommendation. And I think it is a great process. I think it's one that hears all perspectives and not just the complainant, but also many, you know, from a teaching perspective, a parent perspective, a student perspective. A lot of different individuals have a chance to weigh in on this process. And I, like I said, having gone through it, I think it's a rigorous and a very fair process.
Thank you.
Good comment, Gail. So we have a motion, a second for approval amended board regulation, G A A C dash B R, procedure for reviewing complaints about instructional resource material. Any other discussion? Jason?
So would, would the intent be to have a student on that committee? Because I don't see that listed.
If you look at, that's just the board regulation. I believe if you look at the policy on instructional review, it does include, it defines the group.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second for approval amended board regulation, G A A C dash B R, procedure for reviewing complaints about instructional resource material. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion, a second. There be no further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Number seven, nothing under tuition, eight, other. We have, for your information, negotiation seminar is in February. And for those attending, I think Amy, you have your list complete. Thank you for taking care of that. If anyone has changed their mind and would like to go, let Amy know very soon, like tonight. That would be very helpful. And under B, is there a, as Dr. Leck mentioned in his superintendent part, we have to review this every six months and then put, keep it on our, updated on our website. There has been no changes, correct? Review, B, review and approval of required return to learning and continuous of services plan. Is there a motion? Motion by Aaron? Second by Diane? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Items for future agendas. Is there any items for future agenda? Any items for future agenda? Do you think of an item for future agenda? Please let myself or Dr. Leck know. Under Meetings to Be Scheduled, we have the school board meeting on Monday, February 6, 2023, at 5:15 here in the Thompson Room in the middle school. The North Dakota School Boards Association Negotiation Seminar is on Thursday and Friday, February 2nd and 3rd in Bismarck. And this will be on our agenda continuously until we've completed negotiations. So is there a motion for possible executive session to discuss negotiation strategies? I don't know that we need this right now, but we will bring it up. But we'll continue to have it on here. If there's not a motion, we will move on. A motion? Okay.